Okay, and wait till you hear what I'm recommending with that one. Okay.
Did we do the survey?
No, we need to do the survey.
Oh.
So, there are a couple of things we need to do to get to a point. But the first is the senior center. So we'll reconvene, we're now back in order. The request for a survey, does this board willing to make a motion to request a survey as requested by the Board of Finance to encompass not only the senior center, open space, but also those issues that were covered on the town survey in 2008?
I will make that motion.
And I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
As long as they identify the funds.
They said they would identify the funds, and they're not coming out of our budget.
With funds identified by the Board of Finance. I will make that motion.
Yes.
I'll amend mine to a second.
I'm inconsistent with what we just did. And I don't want the survey to come back and have to...
No, no. I'm the chief administrator of the town. They can't do the survey only by charter can.
Right.
You know, it'll have to go through the normal process, absolutely.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay. We do need a decision on the financial number, but that'll go in our capital improvement plan, and we can do that during the budget. So we can hold that off for right now.
That's true.
Now, what we have before us...
Bless you, Sean, has blessed you.
Well, we're talking about budget later, so don't bless me too much. It's gonna be a long one, ladies and gentlemen.
I've got my lucky tie on tonight, we're good.
Okay. What we have before us is town seal use policy in accordance with the best practices that we started doing when we put a policy up. We tried to put it on an agenda at least twice. This is a first read, so it's not my recommendation that this is not an action item. It's for the initial discussions. We'll hear more from staff, we'll hear from the public. But I went to give Carolyn a... Because I know Carolyn's ready to go home, so give us a quick summary and...
Sorry.
Well, good evening again here. Basically, what we're trying to do, Rick and I have worked together with this and gotten Bob DiCrescenzo to sign off on it. And basically, with the town seal, that's sort of the identity of the town. It's a symbol for the town, registered with the Secretary of the State's office as official seal for Simsbury, which is the seal on the front of the dais here. And the policy are... What our intent is to kind of make one point of contact for anyone who wishes to use the seal, be it internal or external. And the purpose of using the seal would be for town business only, not for private use, but for the town's use. So that's sort of what the policy kind of lays out, a process for someone to make the request and to receive approval or not on using the seal.
One thing, my state statute, actually, Carolyn is the keeper of the seal.
Right.
And that is state law.
Right.
And for, just for a little history, why it came up is recently, the IT department got a request to use the seal. Is that a board meeting for this IT committee, and was on our agenda for what other towns do? And can you realize that there is a general statute out there that governs the town seal? Before we came upon this, it was pretty much ad hoc, so if you needed it, we'd give it away, kind of. And we didn't really have control or accountability for who's using the seal. And so at the website meeting that we had last week, I brought it up that we wanted to look at it in that aspect as well, because it's very easy to hijack a town seal, and someone can use it for their Facebook page or anything else. But we don't even have this policy, which really, by law, we should have a governing policy for. And so I started talking with Carolyn, and it kind of makes a lot of sense that we have this policy.
How do you monitor this? And in other words, if somebody is not authorized to use it, what, what ramifications? What, how does that... Is it entailed, something like that, or is it just the policy within the town of how it's released? So it's not necessarily something that gets into, you know, its use, unauthorized use?
Yeah, I don't know that we can actually control unauthorized use, but we can certainly try to maintain a record of how we have used it and of the requests that have come in. And as Rick said, requests have come into different places within the town, and someone just gave the seal out to whoever put on a T-shirt or a mug or whatever it was. So it's more about how we regulate, how it's given than... Because we can't... That was, yeah, that was my... I remember a mailer, and it was a couple of years ago, and it was just a company, and it had the town seal on it. And I thought, you know, it's misrepresentation that we're endorsing something that they're doing. And that's...
Sounds like a business...
So of course, actually, the second part of the question is that, if that came up and was brought to our attention when we find it, it's really to say that, you know...
He sent us a... Yeah.
In the early round, we'd allow, cease using it. If not, then contact Town Attorney and file a...
Yeah. Okay.
The only thing that I would notice on this, Lisa, is it specifically references everything through the town clerk. Town clerk's ever not here, we need a designate to... And I'm assuming it's one of the assistant town clerks.
Right.
But it just references the town clerk.
Yeah.
And by allowing it to be, or your designate, then one of the other town clerks, or you could say assistant town clerk, it just gives you the ability. I think it's absolutely the right thing to do. I've been in some groups where we actually had issues with members wanting the stationery for the group and then sending out their own letters, and it's like, whoa, board didn't approve this. So I think it's a very good thing.
And we've had different people, groups come to us. Somebody wanted to create a game board and put it on the board. And we said, nah.
Just a couple of years ago.
Yeah. And they ended up using the Chamber of Commerce seal, which made more sense for this particular thing. It was a play on monopoly kind of thing, so it made more sense. And we've had, you know, someone come and say, well, I want to have a shot glass with town seal on it. So...
Right now or in general? Did you like what Carolyn...
The Oracle Society did that one.
Patrick Day is...
Yeah, something to give a sample. So there are things of that nature that are kind of logical, that, no, we don't want the town affiliated with that. And we don't want to allow the seal to be used and have people think, and they will think, that the town endorses it, or is promoting it, or is somehow benefiting from this financially or whatever. So that's sort of where we're kind of coming from here.
I can't, I got this question. So the sheet that you've got here for the approval, do we currently make town staff and the police department get approval to use the town seal?
No, because we don't have a policy.
So should...
No.
It's not to be a pain in the neck, but do we really need to get the police department to ask permission?
To answer your question, it would be more of a way to keep a record of how it's used. So I'm not gonna... If it's for town use, I don't see that I would deny something like that. But it would put on record the fact that, yes, the police are using it on their uniforms, they're using it on their cruisers, they're using it, whatever. Public Works is using it on the snowplow trucks. Twenty years ago, we had a request from someone who made a donation to the library. And with this donation, they said, I'd like to create a book plate to put in the books that are going to be purchased with this donation. And I'd like to have the town seal on it. So we said, yes, go ahead, create the book plate, use the town seal, and the town library, town librarian would be in charge of making sure that book plate was only used in town of Simsbury, books in the library. So it's more along those lines. It's not... I'm not going to judge whether or not the police department should use a seal particularly.
I trust you, just the concern is, is that you're... We're inserting more paperwork and process to, I mean, it's the police department. And maybe if you could just amend it to be for reporting purposes only, you don't actually have to sign off on those, I guess is my point. It's just, I don't see the need to have anybody sign off on the police department using the town seal.
But if, say, take that, and I agree with you, but how about if you take that scenario where, say, the police cabinet, we're not picking on the police cabinet place, and Chief, you know, I know you're listening, Chief.
He's all waiting on his thing.
But say they, say they're making hats for the cadets or folks in that committee. So they're going to take a town seal, and they're going to submit it to an establishment that does stitching on a hat or on a shirt.
I get that.
Okay.
So I guess what I'm saying is, you've got town-owned equipment and decals on town vehicles.
Mm-hmm.
My point is just make that for advisory purposes only. For the hats, for memorabilia, for all that other stuff, totally agree. But if you're going to put the seal on the side of the cruiser, it's a waste of your time to review it, and it's a waste of their time to fill out the form to get your permission to do it, in my opinion.
Well, the form is just to help people, especially to fill it in.
I get everyone else. The police department and Tom Roy's team, I don't think need to be subject to the approval process, is my only point. Again, you can do whatever.
Or things like equipment.
It's just my suggestion. I'm not trying to muddy this.
For the vehicles, you're saying?
For the town vehicles only. I think we all have an acceptance that they're going to be used for that.
Well, we could...
Yeah, not with the... I wouldn't think we want them to sign a piece of paper for their uniforms as well.
I don't think it would even be every time they get a uniform. Once we say, I mean, we could just do an addendum, the following things have been approved, and we'll submit them to Carolyn, all town vehicles, all town uniforms.
That's what I'm saying. Just make it easy for everybody. We all know we're going to do that.
And we'll subject...
And I do trust you. It's nothing new with you, it is.
No, no. We can give it to council just to make sure that that's compatible with the way the law is written, because, and I don't even know if Carolyn can designate someone other than herself to approve if she's not there.
Well, in general terms, an assistant town clerk can perform the duties of the town clerk if the town clerk is absent.
Fine.
So that's sort of a statutory kind of thing. So I don't think that's a problem at all.
Okay. So is he going to come back again one more time, but we're good now?
One more time? Next time?
Yeah, we're going to do it one more time. And also, we want to give staff an opportunity to comment and the public, if there are people out there who...
The chief.
Yeah, and the chief. Tom Roy's here. Chief?
Just got to help us. I got your back.
So between now and the next time, we'll try to talk about it.
The chief doesn't care and doesn't share my concern, then I'm fine with that. I'm just trying to make it easier for everybody.
But you'll see that this is a new best practices this board has introduced, and it's about whenever there's a new policy, we put it on our agendas twice, so that the public, one, has notice and an opportunity, adequate opportunity to comment. So thank you for doing the work behind this, and we'll get more comments and come back to you with possible changes and recommendations, and we'll go from there. But thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
So there's no action on the CNI.
No action.
No action.
Okay, moving on.
That's the contract on the virtual town halls.
Yes.
On the addendum contract pertaining to Development Committee.
Yes.
You were over that piece earlier today. This is where the town's engaged with the EDC member subtask force for a sum of $10,000, really for rebranding and redesign of the website. And the contract that we have, and I think that's before you right now, needs a little bit more tweaking, talking with town council. So we're really not, we could approve it, but with the approval of town council on that final...
And he did make, council did make recommendations. One thing I do want to make sure that this board understands and the public understands, that website is owned by the town. So this is not going to be something that the task force has control over, final decision-making over. This is an administrative function of the town. I'm looking forward to the recommendations. They've made excellent recommendations so far, and looking forward to working with them. And we'll set up a process. I've asked Mr. Cook to work with Mr. Vizano on setting up the process. So they'll head up. They can obviously give your board updates, seek input from your boards and from the community. And we'll do as we have in the past when we've redone websites, make sure we're reaching out to the different community groups, so that everyone has an opportunity to comment and give suggestions. We'll set up a process for that as well, which will, of course, include the Economic Development Task Force.
Great.
A quick question, it just occurred to me when I was reading this, but is this the same as, like, virtual high school? And do we have a calendar that looks like this for the school bed or...
No. This is virtual town halls and schools, different company. They don't use them at all.
Okay.
Okay, so they're not the same?
No.
That's why, I was just wondering when I saw the name, if they were the same type of room.
No.
And just to be clear, this $10,000 is what we already appropriated from last year's, or the current fiscal year's budget for the task force line item, right? So this is not, this is not an additional spend.
Although it is, you're making a great point, Sean. It was not initially contemplated as a redesign of the town website. The initial proposal has came to us for, was for, I think...
EDC page, webpage.
An EDC page. And they were just going to do that page. They, in terms, one of the things I think the task force was tasked, was looking at marketing, and they felt that the website, although it is, and I just want to make sure everyone understands, this is primarily an administrative page that we use to run the town. It's how we get emergency information, it's how we do emergency signups, it's how we do, you pay your tax bills, it's how, it's a functional tool of the town. So it, and it's...
It's quasi-functional.
It's very functional.
They could use some more function.
But we're working, I mean, I think, which is why it's great to have this additional money, so we can look at the function. I mean, when you do a town website, you want to look at function, transparency, ease of use...
Yep.
To get the key needs of the town met. And if we can do that and make it look beautiful, absolutely, we should do that. But, you know, as long as everyone understands, we will never sacrifice the core functions of the town, that this will remain the primary...
Absolutely. I wouldn't think otherwise. And my point, Lisa, and I totally understand, you know, sometimes scope changes on these projects and these subcommittees, but in reading through this and hearing it, I mean, I think this is pretty good value for our money, and it sounds like it's solving two, if not more, items on the task force wish list. I know it's a little bit different than what they told us originally, but it seems to make sense to me.
No, yeah, my only concern, I did check with Joe, to date, none of the $32,000 has been spent, so there are funds available to allocate from that. My only concern is there was quite a list, and are we still planning on accomplishing everything that were on those lists? And if not, do we need to find money elsewhere to accomplish those tasks?
No, I think that was what I talked about when Chris had asked the question, you know, in speaking with the chairs and rechecking in as we started to get close to this number, because it's fairly large, of the 32,000, making sure that we could fulfill what we wanted to when we wrap up and pack up our bags. But I do want to just also comment, you know, it was interesting when Oz Reville from Metro Hartford Lions came before us and said, you know, the number one thing that people look at first before they even pick up a phone or drive through your town is your website. And so I think to the extent that absolutely there's a priority for the functionality, being able to satisfy the uses of the town from a resident and a business perspective, from everything, from emergency use, you know, to economic development. And I think that we can do this, and as I said, the exciting part is to be able to do it through virtual town hall and, you know, work within the confines of staff-trained, you know, staff training that's already in place and their ability to use it. But again, even through some of the initial conversations with the staff, there, you know, some thoughts and ideas and look at analytics, you know, reach out to the community, as you said, so I think it will present a great opportunity to come away with a great final product.
So I move that we approve the services contract and addendum with virtual town hall, subject to review and approval by council.
I'll second that.
Sorry.
Any further discussion on this?
Thank you.
I hope we need to take a vote. One of the things, the only thing that concerns me is one of the tasks was to review existing marketing pieces and create an action plan and budget for new revised marketing pieces. Are we still looking at marketing pieces, and are we going to have the budget? Do we plan on using, because if we're not using the 22,000, I have money I can spend in terms of, for the town, or we may want to put it somewhere else.
That's going to be a turnback if they don't spend it, though, right?
It goes, it reverts back to the, to the general...
That is, yeah, that is a relevant issue, because that's going to be turned back fairly quickly. So if there was anything that was going to need funding, we're running, the window's running out on that.
Right, and we're working on that right now. So we'll have more information for folks on that. And as I said, I think some of the initial conversation, when we got to this point and we were looking at this, again, this larger chunk of money, was, you know, let's touch base back with the chairs, figure out where we're at with some things, and have a degree of confidence that we will not, we will not need any more money. And certainly, I think, the money that is allocated will be used in its highest best use towards the marketing of the town and other recommendations from that board, so...
And has any progress been made on the EDC website? Where are we with that?
So this, the EDC page will be part of the town website.
It already is.
Right, but in other words, we're going to be looking specifically to that page around the content, going back to that outline. So while the general focus on the overall look of the site through Rick and analytics and Tom and working through that, we do want to go to that page itself, give it a little bit more attention, go back to that outline, and talk about what we want to achieve, so that we can, you know, really meet that goal that the EDC had in its original request.
Okay.
And I think, and the point, too, that's underlying there is where we have the staff to support that EDC presence now in that webpage, which is the same format as the rest of the departments in town hall. So, you know, with the communication specialist, and it was a discussion at the EDCs that they wouldn't be able to, with their volunteers, support that webpage. So, and that's where change focused, where we're going to stay with the town of Simsbury's website, where we have that labor that's underlining everything. So that, it's a win-win for both. We look at it as a redesign, bringing it up to date, you know, even though it's, you know, three years old now, but it, we'll get some new features, a new look to it, and brand it the way, with an EDC flavor, and assist the town in their efforts as well.
Okay.
So I think it's a win-win there.
I will say, the way we've got it structured right now, each department head is responsible for their department websites, and the EDC is under Mr. Peck. So he will be the one responsible for it. We do have Stephanie, who will be able to assist all department heads in managing their websites. So it's not, she was not brought on just to do EDC.
No.
And each department head will remain responsible for their websites.
Right.
I'm not changing the structure of government.
Yeah, no, that was certainly a big consideration, and to the point Jeff made when he made the presentation, was, you know, you don't want to just build it, because you can build it, and then not be able to sustain it. And so we really paid a lot of attention to that while we were going, deliberating through this and came up with this.
Right, and I appreciate your recognition of the fact that the task force as a legislative body, as a recommending body, and that this still remains the town's website.
Yeah.
And it's an administrative function. And we will be seeking, of course, input and direction and, you know, feedback from the EDC, from the Economic Development Task Force, and from other community groups as well, so that we get the most comprehensive and useful, so very much appreciate that. All right, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We would now go on to approve public gathering permits. And we have before, Jerry's not here, so... We have approved public gathering applications for 2015 events listed on the following page. Those events are: the PAC concert, Avette Brothers, Sunday, June 14th; the Sim-Pac concert, Slightly Stupid, Wednesday, July 8th; Sim-Pac concert, Willie Nelson, Saturday, August 22nd; Simsbury Women's Club Arts and Crafts Festival, September 18 through 20. I did confirm with Neil Sullivan that the Sunday date does not conflict with the planned graduation date. So they happen in contact. I appreciate the Performing Arts Center's contact with the schools to coordinate graduation dates, and Mr. Sullivan did confirm that that is not a conflict. All right, we do have members of the Performing Arts Center board here, if there are questions for the board on the proposed concerts. Do we have any questions? All right, may I have a motion then to approve the public gathering permits for the 2015 events listed in your PAC and as stated by me?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of your hard work. Thanks for sticking around.
Avette Brothers is selling like crazy, so get your tickets now.
You don't want to stay? Bird, why are you going?
What about Slightly Stupid?
My husband's been on there for 32 to 45, and the husband, they've all bought tickets already in the front, so...
All right.
And Willie came back, so...
Yeah.
There you go.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks so much. We have before us, we are now on item F, approved the resolution authorizing the first electman to execute agreements and documents with regard to the purchase of a new dial-a-ride vehicle. This came before you a couple of weeks ago, and now I'm, the documents are in. At that time, I told you I didn't need your permission, but go for it. I didn't, now I do. And that's why I'm here seeking that permission. The resolution will have to be read as written in this, so that would go to Chris. Would you like to, as the freshman member of the board?
He keeps missing that moment.
I'll put on my one-sided glasses. Look at Colonel Quinn.
For a long night.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay.
Would you like to...
Yeah. So I propose resolution authorizing the first electman, Lisa Hefner, to sign and execute agreements and contracts along with all necessary agreement contract documents, certifications, and forms on behalf of the town of Simsbury with the Department of Transportation of the state of Connecticut.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, the resolution passed. Okay. And now we go on to other business, and we just keep going. Okay. We have a letter from Aquarian letting...
She says skip G.
Oh.
Item G, class four action.
Yeah, I guess we should do that. Funny how I skipped over that.
Very funny.
It may well have been. Okay. We have Joe, Sean, council here, because this may impact the CIP, given the decisions we made on the senior center and the going to referendum in November. So why don't we begin with operating summary and where we are?
What's that?
We'll begin with the operating budget. We, the board had asked for some additional information, which we were able to collect, and I'll have Joe report out on this.
I was very fortunate to have a two-hour conversation there with the Chairman of the Board of Finance. It was this big.
That would be Sean's bad.
I have no sympathy for you.
I have a whole new respect for Sean. It's amazing how well-advised you are here.
Stop.
So he mentioned that although there is no, not a formalized policy, which I was all too happy to point out in regards to the CNR cap, he would prefer, or strongly recommend, that we not approve a CNR budget over $416,500.
We're at 16,000.
So...
That's an 82,000.
Last year's number.
And as I'm saying this to you, I'm having wished I printed this out, but, so essentially, we'd be looking to defer about $82,000 worth of CNR. And we have potential reductions for you, reductions slash movements. How do we want to do this? Do you want me to put stuff up on the screen?
That would be great. Yeah, so we can see how much, so...
Sorry. I'm not going to be able to do that. What generation is this? You've got to turn that on now. Power on. All right. So here's roughly how we were thinking about doing this. So we're going to slot proposing, Sean, it's on my screen too. Okay. So we proposed moving one of the police vehicles into the operating budget, which would move $29,000 over to the operating budget. $29,000, I'm sorry, a second vehicle out of special duty, and all of this has been talked about with the police chief, and he's in full agreement with it.
And there are sufficient funds to cover that expense?
Correct.
And it has been done in the past?
Yes, yeah. Nothing that we're doing here hasn't been done in the past. I think last year was the first year that you guys actually moved the purchase of the police vehicles out of the operating budget into the CNR. We have two reductions that are small, $4,000 reduction to the park and rec truck. We spoke with Jerry, he was able to come up with a different scope for that vehicle, also accomplished roughly the same thing, that returns about $4,000. And then we had a reduction to the building and grounds truck. We're going to find money to make that $14,000 up. Tom Roy is in agreement with that. And we're going to pay for the central mailing office equipment out of the fiscal year 15 operating budget. We have some favorability in the IT budget, basically because we slow-rolled the hiring of third IT professionals. So trying to find budget relief that would ultimately get us back to within the box that the Board of Finance recommends.
Excuse me?
Now, we did ask Joe to take a look at this, and how it would fit in terms of our percent. So Joe, if you could bring up that page, that would be helpful.
So...
I do want to, first of all, really thank and recognize town staff, because we brought in everyone who's on CNR, and they worked together to find a solution.
Wow. I apologize, guys, this looks a lot better on my screen. But roughly, this puts you at 1.64, including the $4,000 for the social services, this is the miscommunication, the $3,400 for the health contract, the building supplies and cleaning supplies. This would restore the assessor full-time, $5,000 more for Simsbury Main Street. It does not include the $4,400 for the conferences, didn't seem like there was an agreement on that. Obviously, it shows the $29,000 plus up for the police vehicle. As you bring down your capital non-recurring, you obviously reduce the amount that you have to pay back, so that's about $16,400. This is the savings that I identified of $80,000, a major medical. And with putting in the assessor at a full-time, obviously you've got to take out the part-time salary. So that's actually a map. So you guys are at 1.64 right now, if you include all these items.
Joe, can I ask, what's the accommodation for the $14,000 on the reduction to buildings and grounds? How are we approaching that?
Go ahead, Mr. Roy.
The question's to you, Joe.
I know, I'm well aware it was.
It's not going to be easy, as long and short of it. We're hoping to make it up, possibly doing the trade-in from buildings and ground and maybe taking another truck from Highway and doing two trade-ins to try and make up that difference. It's not pretty, it's trying to make it work. And what we're doing, even with park and rec, what Jerry's doing on that, he's not buying a new plow to go with a new truck. That's how he's making up the $4,000 on that. So today when we sat down, it was crunching numbers on how we could force things to work.
So in essence, we've reduced it 82,000. I guess I would question, you know, significantly impacting or impacting the value of purchases below what you really wanted to accommodate over, in essence, $18,000? You know, on a budget which is, we're coming in, you know, approximately 1.7. I just would really question that. I personally would be comfortable going back to the Board of Finance on it. This is, you know, a one-time purchase, very low budget, as good a time to get it as possible. We've reduced, you know, everything except $16,000 to $82,000, which I think is a very good faith response to them. I just hate to see the value of two purchases undermined for, you know, $18,000 with a 1.64% budget. I feel the Board of Finance is always open to conversations on this, and will recognize the good faith response, Joe, that you've done.
No, I agree, you're well within your right. Because there is no policy out there that's written down that dictates how much you can request from the Board of Finance.
Yeah, I'm actually not looking at it as a right or not right. I mean, I think their request is fair, and I think we've responded really well to it. And I clearly think there is a legitimate discussion of having the $18,000 in there as we head stiffly.
If you're asking me whether or not I think $3,500 or whatever the payout would ultimately be is going to be of point of contention with them, I don't. But having said that, you know, I'm trying to take into consideration the feedback that I got today.
Yep.
Numerous times over that two hours.
I didn't make further, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
Do we know if there's any given the police department budget for purchasing two vehicles instead of three?
You know, I did get pushback on that.
I don't know what they...
They got a pretty regular schedule with that, right? I mean, they kind of got to do it.
Depending on the time they were getting for a year.
Okay, I didn't know, I just wanted to know if that was a...
Yeah, it's a fair question.
The issue is raised, when the staff met earlier today, that was not considered enough.
I don't know, I kind of agree with Chris on it. The nickel and diming on the kind of the truck is bothersome.
There's not a... Tom, you don't have additional funds in LoSiP to make up the difference?
We kept LoSiP here for paving. The one place, you know...
And you got a wood chipper in there now, right? So that's because you're doing tree work alongside?
And that's for Highway, this is for buildings and grounds. And I think as long as, you know, we might be able to do a little work. One of the things what we're going to do is transfer one of the trucks from the Highway Department to building and grounds, so that we would trade in two vehicles to purchase the one new vehicle. So I mean...
Is the $14,000, is that swapping a plow over also? So in theory, what I'm trying to do is say if we're swapping a plow on one truck, from the used truck to the new truck and saving $4,000, are we doing the same thing with the other?
This is going to take into account, you know, bringing up an older plow onto the new vehicle, and probably not putting on a standard unit, and then, like I said, trying to trade in two vehicles towards the one.
Okay. Just to throw... Where I was trying to get to was, what if we added back in $10,000, and we're just $4,000 for the two plows, and what would $10,000 do to this?
Not much. It's not $10,000, so 1.69. You know, it depends on what number you guys are comfortable with. Are you guys dead set on having a number under 1.7, 1.75? Because there are options. We can actually move two police vehicles over, which is actually how it was the year before last. And then there were two in the operating budget.
I also wanted to bring up, we talked about the, you know, actually a very holistic discussion around assessing buildings and, you know, our space and the hub and all that stuff. We talked about that $5,000 for the hub really being a placeholder, and we don't have a plan for that, and yet we're getting ready now to do a lot of assessment of buildings and potentially, you know, again, with the Eno Community Center and maybe a place for the hub. Why take that money towards an unknown when you've got all this other planning going on that has money towards knowns? And could we put that $5,000 towards the plow?
Which, I'm sorry, I apologize.
It's the...
We've got $5,000 in here in one of the budgets for that hub.
The placeholder.
As a placeholder.
It's a placeholder.
That you didn't like, but it was there, it was...
I mean, I'd rather buy a truck than have a placeholder for something that's not even close to being designed or funded.
Do you remember where that was?
I don't, that's a good question.
Is it in Central Ebner?
It's in Central, yeah.
I believe it's in Central Ebner. Lisa, where's the hub money? That $5,000?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The $5,000 for the business hub.
We're trying to find the hub money. The Chamber?
That's in tourism.
All right. Basically, what we just brought up is cutting that $5,000 and trying to get more funding for these trucks that we're losing.
Paying back for the trucks.
Because the trucks are a certainty, the hub is not.
All right, good. What was the statement of work that surrounded that $5,000, as you guys understood it?
It was to help pay for rent, help pay the town's portion of rent for the tourism center. This was a project that was began by Ms. Glassman before I got here. Conversations were had with Chamber, as you know, they're ongoing. They are hopeful that something can happen in the next year. You know, I'm...
I'd like to see...
I appreciate that.
That sounds pretty contingent for something that's an immediate need. You know, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, I'm just saying that for something that's really...
My point, which I made, I think, on Saturday too, was just to say that we're looking at lots of buildings, we're studying this whole use of Eno. We could come up with a place that won't cost us anything, that we could give them to use.
Well, we do have $22,000 in Economic Development Task Force that hasn't been used.
You're just loving it right now, tonight, aren't you? Aren't you? Well, no, no, no.
That money could be allocated for that, and then we could, you know...
I think in terms of this budget right now, for this $5,000 that we're talking about, with, again, the studies back on the buildings, I would rather see the truck plow, the plow to the truck be able to be purchased.
I just think, you know, Chamber has a new director, it would be nice to be supportive of them, of the Tourism Committee. I mean, obviously, I don't have the votes, I put it in there because I thought it was of value, but you guys can cut it.
And I don't think it's not showing security.
But I would also add, if we're looking for $5,000, don't we have added back in there the $5,000 for Main Street?
Yes.
Which wasn't part of Lisa's budget. So, I mean, I would advocate that, take that $5,000 in savings versus the $5,000 for the tourism.
I'm not going to support that, and I'll tell you right off the bat. You know, and I don't see it as a lack of support for the Chamber at all. I mean, we are assessing all of our buildings right now. We could come up with, in a very short term, as we head towards November, to, you know, with that goal for the Senior Center, to come up with a viable option that works. And I don't think it shows a lack of commitment. I think if we make a priority of that conversation, heck, even within the survey, do we want a visitor's center for the residents to try to understand the value of that? But I think, you know, Main Street was shorted last year with their money, and I don't want to see them shorted again this year.
I would just say, you've got three months to spend $22,000, there's an obvious solution here.
That's a different fiscal year, though, this one.
Yeah, but it could be used.
I mean, there's a lot of things we haven't maxed our budgets out on, not just that line item. So, I mean, there's going to be, I assume, some turnbacks in a number of places that we could go looking for that. I don't disagree with you, that's potentially a source, but...
So I'll take a motion to remove $5,000 from the Tourism Committee's line item to zero.
I don't think we're there yet.
We need individual motions right now, yeah.
Yeah, we're looking at the whole thing together.
What we're trying to do is not sacrifice basically $8,000 for two purchases, to...
$18,000.
Eighteen, you're right, I apologize. $18,000 to come in at the capital non-recurring guideline. So we're just kind of kicking around where we might be able to get.
Which is a sheet he just handed out, Lisa.
Right.
I think you would step up.
Is that gutter melt system for the entirety of the library roof, or just a specific troubled portion of it?
As for the entirety of the library, there's already some sections that have gutter melt, this is to cover any area that is not currently covered by gutter melt. And it's a number that's based upon, that there are going to be some contingencies that are built in there. We don't know how many new circuits we're going to have to run.
I guess what I'm asking is, there's an opportunity to address the most troubled spot you have this year, therefore reducing that line item in exchange for getting you a full truck?
There's an economy of scales issue on that, if you do that. It may make sense to just do it, but...
That's what I'm trying to understand, I mean...
I think there's a company that's built on lots of...
You know, and it's tough, because, it's funny, because the gutter melt fell under DPW, but if the gutter melt stayed under DPW and there ended up being a savings, and that, let's say it was $5,000, could go towards, next year, after that's done, go towards plow. If it is still under CNR, under public works, that works for me.
I'm fine with that.
I saw that didn't go under library, it went under public works, so...
Your buildings.
You don't have another $8,000 in Town Day Road?
Town Day Road cannot go towards buildings and grounds, Town Day Road could go towards Highway. So again...
Can't buy a truck for the Highway Department?
Well, I think, again, why we made the decision we did today, is push comes to shove, working with Joe, we can find a way. It's just not going to be easy, but we'll find a way.
I'm not trying to, I'm really trying to help you.
Yeah, no, and what I'm saying is, I'm trying to help, I kind of felt I took one for the team today, we sat around and said, if I got to scramble, it's a little bit easier, I think, for me to scramble, to find that differential than it is for Jerry, just because I'm dealing with a larger budget to begin with.
So we just got you potentially $10,000 closer with some potential flexibility in the gutters, possibly removing the hub, that only cuts the problem down to $8,000 versus $10,000, or $18,000?
Yeah, I personally don't like removing the hub.
We don't even know what it's for.
Well, we do. There was a recommendation made in 1996 that we have a visitor's center. We've had one in the past for many years.
It was in sixth grade in 1996.
Well, we have one.
Technically, Economic Development asked for $50,000.
I mean, they formally had a motion, $50,000.
Yeah, but that was to relocate a building and take a building out of the charrette that's in the center of town that could be used for retail.
It was a tangible, I agree, no one pursued it, obviously because it was very, right, ambiguous, but my point was, it was a formal motion request for a project for $50,000 for purpose of the hub.
But again, there was still no scope around it. They don't even know where, they don't know how much it's actually going to be.
Yeah, Sean, I just want to go in another direction. For me personally, I go back to going back, because I think these are purchases that would typically be in capital non-recurring, right, Joe and Tom?
Correct.
So this isn't like the police car, where at one point it was in the operational budget. I really propose we go back to the Board of Finance with that $18,000 still in the capital non-recurring, indicate to them we certainly have gone most of the way towards their requests, and just ask for some flexibility on it. They're one-time purchases, this is the right place for it. You know, to a certain extent, part of what Lisa, in very good faith, has tried to do this year, is, you know, get some capital purchases in that are important from a, you know, safety, maintenance, you know, quality of efficiency point of view. So instead of taking $5,000 from the hub, I'd rather go back to Board of Finance and ask for $18,000 more in capital non-recurring.
I mean, if there's a fund balance there, I think they can give it to us. It's not, from what I understand, it's not as simple as we want it, they can give it. If the money doesn't exist...
Joe, can you speak to that?
They have to transfer more funds into the account. If the money's there, they can give it to us.
This is an area I heavily disagree, right? Because you guys have a reimbursement model on your CNR where you basically repay every five years. You guys have taken steps to actually ensure that it's prefunded, whether you... There's enough, you have a million-dollar fund balance there right now, there's enough to pay for it, but I have to satisfy Peter a little bit more as far as showing him how best to use that fund balance. I know I'm not being very clear, trust me, it's not intentional.
I don't look at this as an argument. I think they made a very legitimate request, and we've made a very good faith response to it. Now we're going back to them, you know, on the flip side, and asking for some flexibility on the $18,000, which I do believe they may have. And if they don't, Sean, I'm totally happy to respond to that.
Again, I don't disagree with you, Chris, but, I mean, trust me, in years past, we've gone there, and that door has gotten slammed very hard, and it's not pretty, and then we meet in the hallway in an emergency Board of Selectment meeting, and we start making cuts. And I don't want to do that. That's not a way to run a town, that's not a way to make decisions.
I totally agree.
Well, a couple of things that happened is, one, they did not give us a cap. There's no written policy, we didn't get a vote from them or a direction. I never received an email saying what the cap was. So while there's certainly been an expectation, I don't deny that, you know, they've certainly said things. I haven't seen anything that's come to me with a specific cap. Is there anything out there that...
Statutorily, we can spend far more than we do, right? I mean, there's no debate on that, it's...
I mean, I think you have to look at what are the needs of the town. We started out with almost $1 million in requests for CNR, brought it down to 500, were able to get it down. Tom does say he can work with what we're proposing. We brought everyone into the room and said, what can we do? They did feel that this could be accomplished with the proposal you have before you. The police was consulted, Mr. Roy was consulted, Jerry Tonner was consulted, Tom Cook was consulted, Joe Mancining and Mr. Kimball. So this was not an ad hoc decision, this was made with thoughtful consideration of the resources. We had Tom do some research in his things in terms of vehicles and what could make it work. Jerry looked at his capacity as well, and they felt that they could do this. Yes, it's tight, but everything is tight in this budget.
So can I ask, just for, you know, playing with our chart here, if we added back the $18,000 or made the request to do it, we would have to take away some of the reduction, so $3,600 bucks out of the...
All right, so I'm adding back the $18,000 to CNR.
Mm-hmm.
Just going to remember which direction this goes in. Do I do it here? What's that? No, I can, I can, I'm just trying to...
I recommend, guys, if we're going to go back to the Board of Finance and tell them that we think all of these projects are worthwhile, I don't think we change the CNR at all then. I think we ask for the whole number that everybody was already on board with, that was already really well thought out from Lisa's standpoint. You know, I don't think we nickel-anddim any of it. I think, you know, because I have concerns about putting the police car back into the operating budget, you know, it's, we need to do it. And again, I'm not going to jeopardize that police car, but...
Oh, we're buying three police cars. I couldn't, yeah.
Exactly, I 100% agree with you, but I'd rather go back for the whole 499 if we're going to have that conversation.
I think that's absolutely appropriate.
Then nickel and dime our way through it and run the risk of it not working somewhere.
I think that's appropriate. We could certainly do that. I mean, this...
We ask for the whole thing. I mean, and if, again, I think we understand that where we can get back to and maybe that's the compromise when we get to that conversation.
I'm comfortable with that. I believe that all these, I mean, I believe that all these asks were appropriate. I wouldn't have put them in my budget if I didn't think they were.
Okay, so that's the number with the 18,000, but then, yeah, wherever we were back before.
You know, I mean, I agree with your point, Chris. You know, these projects are worth it. We should do them.
Let me just ask, where the purchase of police cars, where should they be? In the operating budget or capital nonrecurring?
In the Board of Ed, you guys, when you were on there, you guys used to buy the buses out of CNR, right?
Yeah, I think...
I think that's what they...
Yeah.
That's correct.
You did the same thing. You did like three a year, whatever.
We're systematically buying every year.
Buying of our buses. Because back, back many years ago, the Board of Ed, I think, used to come in and ask for a massive amount of buses all at once and it was, it was an issue with predictability. So they really started to go towards the CNR model with both, I think, police cars and buses to get smoothing so that it wasn't messing up the operating budgets, right? That's kind of the point of CNR, is they're technically one-dine items. Now, we have them every year, but you never really know what that item's going to be from year to year and there's a lot of fluctuation with it.
I mean, I think it's appropriate to either put it in operating or CNR, which is why we have these options before us, that you can make an argument either way. They're both actually appropriate. When I, remember when I set this budget, we weren't aware of the $80,000 in savings. So there were different circumstances when I set it. I will tell you, I have spoken with staff personally on these, Tom Roy, the chief, and Jerry, and they're comfortable with this. So we can do this.
I mean, I feel strongly about sending as low a number as possible to the voters and to the Board of Finance. And I get that we have room to go back to the 1-7, but as I said at the very beginning, that doesn't mean we should. And I'd rather use the CNR account and pay ourselves back over five years as we typically do for a lot of this stuff and have the voters enjoy a little bit more flex, or the taxpayers enjoy a little bit more flexibility.
So Joe, if we don't do this, what does this do to our percent? If we just stick to the original request, can you tell us where we're at?
Again, this is just, I'm not trying to...
No, it's a good conversation, yeah.
And actually, I'm comfortable going either way. I'm not...
Again, my point is I'd rather have the, ask, make the full ask, have the conversation, and then let's have an open dialogue with them. And if we have to reduce, I think we know where we need to reduce, but...
Right. I don't have a problem with that.
Neither, neither ways are responsible. They're both, I think, responsible.
They're both responsible. I wouldn't have put it in there if I thought it was irresponsible.
I agree 100%.
I think that was a great idea, Chris, to just go back and...
I still think we get the friends who break the library, but that's a different story.
So, yeah, and then the other discussion and some thoughts I had since our last meeting, if we take the CNR issue off the table, was I was actually going to propose, I was looking at the conference money that was within each department's budget. And the library and the planning department seemed to really be whacked in terms of their... And the police. So...
And those were looking mostly towards travel out of state when I looked at what I decided to cut.
And I looked at that because the library's specific detail on their conferences actually lists a lot that were out of state. And so what we are giving them will probably, some would be out of state already. But, I don't know, anyway, I was going to propose that we put some money back in for conferences and we could divvy it up between two, but if you say police as well. And if so, if we aren't going to do CNR, I was going to suggest that, but...
I mean, my argument back, when we go to the Board of Finance with our presentation, is we're coming in at 1-5-7, which is lower than I think they were expecting. We're asking for a little bit of flexibility if the fund balance exists in CNR. They're not unreasonable requests, they're all defensible. I think we've met our obligation and then some of putting a thoughtful budget together and...
I'm very proud of this budget. I'm very proud that the staff worked very hard on this. It's a very thoughtful budget. We literally went through it line by line, looked at the background and what supports each line. And I asked them to work and they worked collaboratively. When we made the CNR cuts, I didn't go to Tom, only to Tom, and have a discussion with him and then play. They worked together to come up with a solution. So I just want to congratulate staff on their willingness to work as a team on this and they really did. And I'm, this is a budget I'm very proud of and that I hope the citizens of Simsbury are proud of.
That's always to give you the option. I mean, your path makes a lot of sense. But if they say no, you can...
Right.
I'm comfortable with that.
So you, nobody wants more conference money in then? Is that, I just want to clarify that that was my request.
I was comfortable with where we were Saturday, which I think was to pull it out in fairness.
Because just in fairness, every other department besides those three are funded at 100% and they were funded between 48 and 67%.
Joe was cut.
And Joe was cut too. But Joe didn't argue enough, so I have to...
But you have to look at it in context. I didn't just do, I didn't just do conferences. I looked at everybody's budget as in their entirety. Some budgets, if you look at Hyman's, if you put that in, his entire budget is funded with no cuts. And I, I don't know. I made calls, they're difficult calls.
Yeah, and it wasn't to fully fund that back, but I did just, you know, I mean, if we have the... But if there's not support for it.
I appreciate the analysis, but I think that, you know, it was good that you looked at those and I appreciate what you all did.
And it was within the context of each department's entire budget that I made some of these decisions. And it was in the context of the, trying to hit the 1-7 or below.
And I totally appreciate that fact and I'm comfortable with leaving it out.
And it's $4,000 and as Joe pointed out, if something comes up during the year, there may...
They could come back.
There's always a case that everyone can make, right? There's a worthwhile conversation.
Those are small.
And we've got the end of the year.
We can certainly consider that on an ad hoc basis.
And I would encourage department heads, if there is that need, to not be shy about asking.
And again, it's ultimately up to you guys, but I'm unable to that.
All right, consider it done.
Thank you.
Dropped.
Can I summarize a proposal on capital nonrecurring?
Yes.
Okay. Because I think we're comfortable going back and asking for some flexibility. I do think it's important that we put the police cars where we think they're appropriate. I was comfortable putting them in operating, but I'm easily convinced that that's an expenditure that should be in capital nonrecurring. So subsequently, that really gets back to Sean's point of going back to them with asking for flexibility on the entire amount. So I would support that.
You actually kind of do have that flexibility if you guys think that that's the right call.
I think if we get significant pushback, that is an option. But I like...
I added $58,000 for police vehicles and haven't touched CNR yet.
Yeah, don't do that. Put that there.
Yeah, no.
I mean, the police, the police vehicles were in CNR last year, right?
Correct.
Correct. It was two years ago that they were originally...
And they've been, I mean, we've been pulling from some different places.
I know. It's appropriate to put them in either place.
And it would be consistent with the Board of Ed policy, yes?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I think that's true, right?
I can confirm that 100%. That would happen.
I thought it, but again, I don't know.
Well, I think going forward, they should be CNR with the police cruisers and the vehicles. And that's where we want to try to keep them, unless there's some overriding need to change it. But I really think that's where they belong, folks.
We're essentially giving ourselves an interest-free loan to finance a vehicle for five years. I don't think it's an irresponsible use of capital. I think it's actually a really intelligent use of capital because you're able to buy three instead of one. In fact, you could buy five for one, right?
Yes, exactly. I mean, that's sort of the idea behind the CNR. It does enable you...
We've got the cash.
It's a responsible funding tool, I think, especially for items like this.
It's a tool you can use, absolutely. And it's a tool I did recommend using, but truthfully, I'm comfortable either way. If the Board of Finance makes us do this. I did talk with staff and we can accommodate it. You know, I put forward the other budget and I thought that was responsible and with the information I had at the time. So obviously, I'm supportive of that. So if this board is okay with that, we'll just go with what we submitted.
So you want a motion? Because I'm going to give you one. I move that we approve the budget as presented with the wish list items outlined there.
Audit, wait, we have actual motions.
We actually have a motion.
Don't we get this all in writing?
Well, we're glad you asked.
You guys have not really, and I apologize, I want to make sure the conversations I had. You guys didn't really discuss the assessor's office. We had kind of stated as a wish list.
Oh, no.
I think we're all good with that.
We're saying we're good with that. Yep, yep.
Lisa, that was your number one putback, right? When you looked at the budget. I tend to agree.
Do we want to separate this into CNR and the other wish list items?
Yeah, Joe has the specific motions that we'll have to make. It's a pretty prescribed amount.
I'm actually giving in to peer pressure right here.
I find that very hard to do.
Are you openly threatening me then?
Stop looking in there, Joe.
Come on, it's almost 10:30.
Oh, my word.
Do you guys want to take like, give me like, two minutes, make sure that this all ties? Fine.
Well, I have something to raise while you're doing that, Joe, so...
Well, if it's a motion, I gotta know about it.
No, is it a point of discussion?
Yes, that I would have raised before we had gone to a motion, but...
We're not about you to raise it.
I haven't made a motion.
Go ahead and raise it.
So just two things. One, there is an issue we haven't yet talked about, which is, which potentially comes up when we, when we talk about the public hearing tonight on the first selectman's salary. I myself would like to consider an exploration of putting the funding back in to get the full salary back up to, you know, the 118 or whatever. The other, I just do want to talk about the Main Street 5,000, you know, one more time. And I completely understand, you know, putting it back in and there's a lot of people who'd be happy with it, but it does represent, you know, well over a 10% increase to Main Street partnership when we really, you know, as you can see, we're below 1.7 for everything else. And, you know, they have lived with the 1, with the 45. They seem to be doing okay with it. When I really look at it, is it an absolute critical need that they have that 5,000? You know, I was kind of convinced that it wasn't. So in particular, that I may be looking for approximately two tenths of a percent. I'm just throwing back up there some further conversation on the 5,000 for Main Street.
Thank you.
And I just, I continue to be confused that we're willing to defend 5,000 for a project that we don't know what's really going to go to. And we're after 5,000 that provides significant economic benefit to this town on a realized basis, year in and year out. They experienced a 10% cut last year. So it was a year that we asked them to live with that and we all didn't enjoy it last year. We didn't want to do it to them, but we did it as part of the shared sacrifice. You know, we're not talking about shared sacrifice this year. You know, the budget's extremely responsible, but we're putting back money in a lot of places and rightly so. And I think this is a place that if we all had an extra 5,000 last year, it wouldn't have gotten cut. And Lisa, I can speak for a number of people on here. You know, it's, I think it's anything but an irresponsible use of funds. I think it's a fantastic use of funds that we've seen for a long time in this town to benefit of. That's, I mean, again, that's my opinion, but...
I don't know, I'd have to agree. In the big picture of economic development, and that's what we've all said, that, you know, is one of our goals. You know, I think that that's money well spent. I mean, they have come in to every meeting, put in endless hours and produced, you know, verifiable results for this town over and over and over, over the years. And, you know, we did ask them to take a big chunk out of their budget last year and I think we should put it back.
I guess I would say to that, it's $10,000. We've got an $18 million budget. We can accommodate both. Let's move on.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
I agree.
I mean, that's why I would say leave it as it is.
I think all the points made were valid. I think we do, you know, we do want to look over time what we give to non-governmental entities and, you know, we need to be responsible with that. And we'll evaluate that over time, but guys, we're at $18 million.
If we feel like we're not getting our investment return on that one, I'll be the first one to say cut it.
Right.
But I feel very good about what we're getting for that money.
So I mean, it's 10:30. We're at 1-5-7.
I feel good about it.
Can we live with that, guys?
I think we can live with it.
I'd give you a motion temporarily, Lisa.
We have to wait for Joe. I've beat enough dead horses, so I have nothing more to say.
Waiting for the motion.
Oh.
Did you guys end up discussing that?
Chris's second issue.
I don't know how we factored the second issue in, but I did want, at a minimum, to have a conversation on the first selectman's salary, which I estimate would require putting in additional 38,000 back into the budget if I did my math correctly.
You know, I've accused myself when this decision was made about...
It is 20.
In December.
It's 20, you're right. I apologize.
So I'll just step out while you guys have this discussion to continue.
Don't go far and don't go long.
I won't.
The only point I'm going to make to you guys, just so you guys are aware of how salaries, specifically elected official salaries are determined, the way that you're, that I interpret your charter, this is your guys' crack at setting that salary.
Right, we understand.
At least in the upward direction. Downward, you guys can do it basically anytime with the budget process. But specifically for this one, this is kind of your crack at it. So you guys are sending this over to the Board of Finance. Once it gets there, you guys are kind of out of the picture when it comes to increasing the salary.
Understood. And I mean, Chris, you're right to bring this up and thank you for doing so. You know, as we talked about at the subcommittee level, and obviously Nancy and Mike were in the audience and heard the conversation but didn't get to participate. You know, I agree with your point that you made, Chris, about the competitive issues and revisiting that. You know, I've thought about it for the last four hours. In addition to the four months, in addition to the six months, you know, I've been thinking about it. And, you know, right now, I don't have any information that's going to lead me to change my decision. I agree with you that, again, there's a competitive issue there, but I don't know how real that is. I don't know what impact that is. And I don't have any information, nor was there an outpouring from the community that we're wrong on the competitive side either. Doesn't mean we're right, but it also doesn't, I don't know what it means. And again, I don't have any more information tonight to make a different determination other than what two first selectmen have recommended to us at this point.
I just, since you guys had a lot to talk about, and Mike and I sat in the audience, I just wanted to chime in on that because though there were only three people that attended the public hearing, I thought their comments were very good. And something that really resonated with me is, I think, the ambiguity in the charter and that speaks to the definition of the job responsibilities of the first selectman. And I think competitive is important, but you, how do you, you can measure competitive when you tell that person what it is they're going to be doing. And then that sort of helps determine what kind of salary should be set against that position. And so I think at this point, and again, with the consultants' recommendations and the recommendation of the first selectman and where we are right now with it, I'm comfortable and would hope that we could address more of this when we get into the charter discussion and shed a little bit more light on it. And then, you know, one of the things I think gets ambiguous about the charter is it allows for salary change, but, you know, I think it should be tied to job description change so that those things can only happen at the same time. And so again, if we look at that and it's in the charter that that can happen and it allows for those things to happen in tandem, and I actually had a call from a resident today that spoke specifically to that, and really didn't feel like competitive was the reason to just pay more because there was the ambiguity of the job description. And they also sort of did the math between our Director of Administrative Services and the salary of the first selectman, saying these folks are running the town in totality and we're paying that total salary should suffice to run it. So I know there's separate positions, but just to share some of the comments from somebody who wasn't in attendance at the meeting.
Yeah, I think from, as a human resource walk, a basic tenet is to pay positions consistent... You know, to me, what is ideal is you pay slightly below market rate, but wrap around that salary all sorts of other compelling reasons for someone to want to work within a community.
Right.
I think it is very...
Your total compensation.
I don't think there is any, I think that we can, there can be tremendous ambiguity as to what exactly should be the salary for the first selectman. I don't believe there's any ambiguity that 75,000 is too low for that role. And we have an opportunity to position ourselves to put that salary at a more competitive place for one tenth of 1%, which opens up the best opportunity for whatever decisions are made down the road as to how that job should be structured, to seamlessly be able to fund it. And when we look at some of the competitive data as to what we do have from other communities, all of which, by the way, you know, in addition to their first selectman or town manager, also have, you know, administrative, you know, senior administrative assistants also have those 60, 70, 80, 90, $100,000 jobs in some cases that were looked at. I just think we are woefully underfunding that position and it really just violates a basic tenet of good human resources. And offer one tenth of 1% to put it back to a place that is competitive. I do think we have an obligation coming into an election to have the salary at a competitive rate that maximizes people looking at it and potentially feeling that the position is one that they can do. And I think it's really, I don't think we have to go too far to think that a $75,000 position in Simsbury that is at risk every two years is very different than a position that's at 113,000.
Yeah, Mike, I don't know if you had any comments that you wanted to add.
I'm still struggling with this after four months. I really need a lot more data to convince me. I am concerned that 75 may or may not be enough. I'm not as concerned about the tenth of a percent. I apologize, I don't remember the number you set. That, to me, is not the issue. The fundamental issue with the, this issue is, and it needs to be, I believe, addressed by the charter, is exactly what is that person's job description and the expectation of them. That is not going to be resolved around this table tonight, this week, this month. That, I believe, needs to go to charter revision and they need to weigh in on that.
And so far, we haven't had a lack of people running for first selectmen. And there's a, there is a...
One of them's here tonight.
A chance that, you know, we get another crack at it next year.
Wise enough that it was.
If nobody runs for first selectmen because the salary's too low, you know, we would have something, you know, to hang our hats on. But there's, like I said, I don't think it's ambiguous that two first selectmen have picked 75 as the salary, the last one and the current one, and this is...
Yeah, and I would just add, I mean, I know we do have a lot of data and you guys had presented some more at the public hearing, but we had the consultant that came, you know, that looked at all that as well and they did all... know, that looked at all that as well, and they did also look at the number of positions that were in certain places that complemented those roles, and came away with that suggestion. And again, it was something that, as Sherry pointed out, has been supported. It really hasn't been a question of the dollar amount. It was all around the timing, and I think we've all agreed all along around the dollar amount. So, yeah, it's not, for this particular budget at this particular time, it's not the percentage of, you know, tenths of percent, again, that it changes for me. It's more of the history behind it, which I thought you did a good job of spelling out at the public hearing, and, you know, where many folks have been to this point on that particular subject.
Well, I think the consultants, I know we talked about this earlier, but I always felt, at least in terms of the written wording, was saying that you may reduce the first-electman's salary as a way of funding the other changes.
Yep.
At least on a written point of view, I don't feel that he ever specifically made that recommendation. Now, again, I wasn't part of the conversation, so it may have occurred more within conversation. But, you know, I have no problem challenging the decision that the former first-electman made and supporting it. I actually think that, as someone who spent my early years as an organizational development consultant managing human resources, I've never seen a situation where someone's job responsibilities have expanded to the point that you actually have to add staff underneath them to be able to accommodate those responsibilities, and yet, at the same time, you actually reduce their salary. Usually, at those points, you're actually expanding someone's salary because structure reflects the scope of impact and responsibility that someone has. I actually think it was not a really well, well, I shouldn't say well. I think it was a well-thought-out decision, but I don't think it was a right decision. I would have challenged it at that time.
Chris, I mean, you bring up a fair point, and as I said in the subcommittee meeting, this is the frustration of municipal versus corporate. We do things in the municipal world that we would never do in the corporate world. We do things in the corporate world that we can't do in municipal.
Can't do.
And it's, I agree with you. In the corporate side, we would not do what we did. I absolutely agree with you. But from the municipal side, you know, we continue to do lots of things that haven't yet, you know, evolved, haven't yet changed. And again, when you look at the responsibility to taxpayers and different things, you know, people want us to make decisions based on job responsibilities in a different way than they would in their own house, in their own finances, in their own businesses. And I think that's part of the challenge. And again, I articulated before, I was disappointed that with the outcry of folks that came out in December, there was actually nobody here tonight, and that was disappointing, but potentially telling as well, that perhaps what we ultimately came to makes sense, and is not to be amended at this point. And as we've articulated tonight, it's time to focus, from the job description standpoint and in the charter, to see what we're really interested in as a form of government. And I hope that, you know, that discussion is far more robust at the public hearing level than it was tonight. Again, I'm not arguing or disagreeing with you at all from the corporate side, but again, you know, sometimes we do things in the municipal side that make folks scratch their head a little bit from their corporate experience, but it doesn't mean it's the wrong decision either. It's, you know, it's a different world sometimes, so...
All right. Well, I think we've had a good conversation.
Yeah.
I'll drop it at this point. With one caveat, Sean, to your point.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I have been involved in municipal human resources since 1989.
Okay.
I actually think this violated good human resource decision-making in the public sector as much as it does in the private sector.
I don't have the same breadth of experience, so I will defer to you on that one.
So I think we're back to where we were on the budget.
We are.
Can we get Lisa to come back in? You want to grab her? Yeah, because we can get back to the...
All right. So are you ready to vet on the budget?
We are.
All right.
That's what the motion looks like.
Do you have the motion?
This is actually set up to print. So you're ready? Go back up to the top.
Hold on. How about we print?
It's set up to print, I think, if anyone wants to do the...
We can read off the screen.
We can read off the screen.
Oh, yeah.
I don't want to keep upping that toner budget. Come on.
We're going digital.
You can add the pads back.
Turn off the lights.
We already did.
Can we vote on something else while he's...
Well, we're doing all the others.
I know. Oh, you mean something else on our budget? Can we amend while we're printing?
Oh, yeah.
Do that, or?
I forgot about the rest of our budget.
Just get it over.
Good idea. Okay, while we're waiting for that. We do, I just wanted to alert people that Aquarian Environmental Champion Awards program is now available. We'll post it.
Fourth with.
Fourth with, on the town website, for people who are interested in that. Appointments and resignations, we do need a motion to amend the agenda because we received a couple of appointments a little bit late to, so I need a motion to amend the agenda to include the appointments of Rick Wagner to tourism and Andrew O'Connor to conservation.
Second up.
Okay. So we have a motion to amend the agenda, going on to appointments and resignations, both go in order A.
Do we have to vote on that motion to amend the agenda?
Well, we amended the agenda to include it.
But would we have to vote on that actual motion?
Oh, yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? No.
Okay.
Okay. Well, we might as well just go there. So we've added this one. May I have a motion to accept the appointments of Rick Wagner to tourism and Andrew O'Connor to conservation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to amend the appointment of Thomas Frank D. to the Board of Education from expiration date of December 4, 2017 to December 7, 7/15, per the town charter, vacancies of elective officials. That's just to make it compliant with the charter.
Before we do this one, I hate to do this to you guys, but I don't think the date's right on the appointments and resignation sheet. The town clerk sent us a letter in here that says that this appointment terminates on the election day, not on the 7th of December.
Uh...
It says, "Your appointment, Mr. Frank, will expire on Election Day, November 3, 2015."
Okay, we'll get...
Not to be a pain in the neck.
Why don't we table that, and Tom, can we get, wait, we have counsel here. Wait.
What new country's heard from?
She put Section 502 of the charter. It says, "Accept as provided in Section 9-221 of the General Statute, any vacancy affected by Board of Selectmen and elective offices, da-da-da-da. Any shall be filled, any vacancy shall be filled by an appointment of a member of the same..." Where the hell is the date? There it is. "Shall be filled with 45 days of such vacancy by appointment of the Board of Selectmen for the unexpired portion of the term or until the next regular town election," which, Section 205 of the charter, elective offices.
It says November 3, 2015.
I've got the charter here if you want it, Tom.
It says, "Whichever shall occur first," so...
I picked up on it.
I did. I was trying to...
Election day occurs before the natural expiration of the term, so therefore, cool. Board of Ed.
I'm sorry. I don't want to be negative, but I don't want to do this a third time.
Good catch.
No, and it's, you know, you know.
I actually read the packet.
It's only 10:40. I'm proud of you. That makes me proud.
I didn't read it.
I thought I had issues.
I always read the packet.
Lord.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're thrilled.
I'm sorry.
Tick tock, tick tock.
Can we skip ahead to Derek Peterson?
There's a motion.
Sherry, he's got her ass.
All right. So we don't have a motion on that yet. Can I have a motion?
It says, "For an unexpired portion of the term or until the next regular town election, whichever shall first occur." So if the unexpired term ends before the next election.
Yeah, so it's 2015.
So the question is, when does his term end? Does it end on the next election or at the end of that term?
The term ends...
Miss Kylie's letter said, "Your appointment, Mr. Frank, will expire on Election Day, November through 2015." So it appears that the...
We've had this before, where there's a gap between the expired term and the swearing-in for the new term.
But in this case, the newly-elected person for this vacancy immediately fills the term. They don't wait, right?
Correct.
That's what bridges the gap. So whoever is elected to this position on November 3 goes and gets sworn in on November 3, whereas everyone else waits for December 7.
That's the question.
Their term doesn't start yet.
So he sits in it, runs for it, and then immediately sits in it.
Well, the question is, why? There may be a gap, because does Mr. Frank's term expire on Election Day, and then does the next one?
I think so.
And then the person who is elected, do they start on Election Day, or do they start on the 7?
The charter says you get sworn in on the 7.
7. So there will be a gap. Okay.
There was, this has happened before. There has been a gap.
Should we amend the motion, or should we wait? What's your recommendation, counsel?
The submission from Miss Kylie, at least in her letter, does say that your appointment, Mr. Frank, will expire on Election Day, November 3, 2015.
Right.
So I think there's sufficient information in this submission to...
I think you can act on it.
To act on.
And we'll take a closer look, and you can always amend it and revise it, but let's see if you follow the...
Well, he's already been sworn in, so it's been acted on. Do we have, what should the motion say?
Exactly as...
So this is now to read. "Amend the appointment of Thomas Frank, as a regular member of the Board of Education, to expire on November 3, 2015, instead of December 4, 2015."
Per Charter, Section...
Per Charter, Section 205.
So moved. Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Kathy, did you get that? Okay.
Sorry.
All right. So now, let's just finish the appointments. May I have a motion to appoint Rick Wagner to tourism and Andrew O'Connor to conservation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I move to accept Derek Peterson's resignation as a regular member of the Economic Development Task Course effective February 17, 2015.
I'll second that with thanks.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Joe, you ready for us?
Yeah, Sean.
Okay, let's go through the meeting minutes then. Special meeting minutes of February 17, 2015. Does anyone have any motions to amend those minutes?
Call me Mr. Ascom.
I didn't check the... Oh, you are Miss Ascom.
No, there was one.
At the end, the last page.
Yes, on page 6. Just going to stop you there.
Would you like to make your motion to amend, Mr. Ascom?
I would.
Who's making it?
Page 6, we amend Ms. to Mr. Ascom.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion, Kathy, was to just fix on the last page of those minutes from Miss Ascom to Mr. Ascom. Okay? We now have the regular meeting minutes of February 23, 2015. Does anyone need to make a motion to amend?
I'm back to Mr. Here, so I'm good.
Does anyone else? Okay, so no action on that. Going on to special meeting of February 26, 2015. Would anyone like to make a motion to amend these minutes?
Nope.
All right, we are done with those then. Joe, you ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
Who wants it?
Oh, please give it to him.
The only question we have is the capital area. Are you okay with capital, or do you want to wait?
Well, let's go through operating, get those out of the way. Then we've got counsel here precisely for capital.
All right, you ready?
All right.
Aye, Sean Ascom, make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen, 2015-16 operating budget in the amount of $19,4,876, with the following changes from the first-electman's proposed budget: $59,096 added to the assessors' office, a reduction of $21,889 reduced from the assessors' office, $5,000 added to community development, public agency support, $80,000 reduced for employee benefits, major medical insurance, $3,413 added to health contractual services, $4,300 added to highway facilities and programs, building supplies, $1,500 added to highway facilities and programs, cleaning supplies, $4,000 added to social services, admin, public agency support. Somebody's got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Aye, Sean Ascom, make a motion to approve the water pollution control, 2015-16 operating budget in the amount of $2,985,637.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Sean Ascom, make a motion to approve the residential rental properties, 2015-2016 operating budget in the amount of $41,310.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on.
Aye, Sean Ascom, make a motion to approve the Simsbury Farms Special Revenue Fund, 2015-2016 operating budget in the amount of $1,891,200.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Sean Ascom, make a motion to approve the Capital and Non-Recurring Fund, 2015-2016 budget in the amount of $400,999,800.
Is that good enough, Sean? Is that good enough, Joe? Okay.
$400,998,000.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
We got to talk about the next one.
Bob, can you please, well, we have some additional information. You saw in the Ethel Walker Woods Open Space Improvements, you wanted the breakdown, and, oh, we still have Jeff here. Thank you, Jeff. The breakdown of those, have those expenditures.
I knew you were here.
So, does anyone have any questions for Jeff about those expenditures?
No, I did see that. I appreciate the additional detail. That's exactly the clarity I was looking for, Jeff. Thank you. I know that's not easy to do on short order, but that's exactly what I was looking for the other day.
Yes, he did a, he was very busy today. Thank you, Jeff.
All right. These are the capital projects that you guys are voting to add. There's some conversations around the portable generator that, you guys did have generators in the past, but we did throw it on this list. Was that on there twice?
What?
What?
It was on there twice because the WCA's... Thank you.
Oh, right.
That's why.
Yeah, and when we had the generator presentation earlier this year, late last year, we always knew there was another piece coming.
Yes, coming, yeah.
And that's this.
Yes.
So it may not be due to that.
But we know, this is not a new, new item. We knew this was coming. It was just a matter of, it wasn't on plan yet.
Not new, new.
So, Joe, we have to make motions to add the additional ones, and then we vote on the capital. Now, there is something we do need to add, and we need counsel's advice, but we'll do that after we do these adds, and that's how we note the senior center and how we, on the capital budget, and how we handle that per counsel and bond counsel's advice.
That won't affect the motions, but we will make a notation of the capital plans and board's advice from counsel.
I thought we were asking the Board of Finance if we could pay cash for the Weetaw Boarder Study. Wasn't that one of our just-do-it lists?
Yeah, what happened with that?
We can certainly do that when we present it, but...
The just-do-it?
We've got to put this on the capital plan.
Yeah, exactly. And then when we have our discussions, we can recommend that they...
How they pay, yeah.
Yeah.
You're right. We've got to get it on there.
Lisa, my understanding is some of these can't be paid for with cash.
Absolutely.
But they still need to go on the CIP plan, which gets them a plan.
That's a good question. You're actually right. So, aye, Sean Ascom, make a motion to add the following new projects to the Capital Improvement Plan fiscal year 2015-2016 in accordance with Charter Section 803B. The Ethel Walker Woods Open Space Improvements for $145,000. The Weetaw Route 10 Planning and Code Preparation for $57,000. The Public Works Complex Infrastructure Improvements for $280,000. Town Hall Site and Safety Improvements for $45,000. The Portable Generator, Generator Infrastructure for $80,000. The Project Planning Fund for $28,000. The various drainage improvements for $175,000. The Portable Generator, $80,000. The Portable Six-Inch Dry Prime Pump for $72,000. 28, the first year, 25, the outers.
Yeah. Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, 28, the first year, 25, the outers.
They don't have something, so...
We have a motion and a second. Do we have the second? Yeah, we got that. Okay.
Yes.
Any further discussion?
It's been added on the...
Do we need, counsel, any question on this?
I apologize. The question I have for Bob, and I should have asked it before, and I thought that this portion took care of it. So in this motion that Sean just passed, we added all of the CIP.
These are not in the CIP right now.
Correct.
They're new to this year.
Questions you need to now approve them.
So do they have to be up top, and then again down below?
Yeah, I think so. So if you're recommending projects for the silly year
This is not, this isn't to fund them, this is to add them. We got to still fund them.
Right.
Or wants to add.
Okay. So I apologize, my printout does not have that.
I can flip that.
And then you're going to talk a little bit about Simsbury Senior Center?
We still got, we still got
Well, do we have to make the initial, we have a first and a second.
So
So we'll vote on that. May I have a motion to add?
I voted to add. I voted to add.
Any discussion on that? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, let's go on to the next. We do have to have a discussion about the senior center. I would like, Bob, can you just give us a summary of where we are in discussions with bond council, and if we go into November for referendum, how that affects the CIP and how we should note it and how we should place it for it.
Well, this is not the first time the Board of Selectmen has done this. I was talking to Carol, and my recollection is, you may know, you may recollect more fully than I do, the high school actually fell into this pattern where it was approved in May, and then it actually went to referendum in
In November?
November, if I remember correctly. But that's just by way of background. There's nothing in the charter that says the capital projects approved as part of the CIP have to go to, and if the method of financing is bonding, that that bonding has to be approved at the May annual budget meeting, budget referendum. What the, what the charter requires you to do under 803A is, the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen shall then recommend to the Board of Finance those projects to be undertaken during the ensuing fiscal year, the entire year, and the method of financing same. And under here, you would say, method of financing, the senior center, would be bonding, asterisk, referendum currently projected to be November 2015. And I think that covers it. And bond council looked at it independently and came to the same conclusion, that there's nothing in the charter that doesn't allow you to approve it in the CIP with a referendum to be held sometime during the fiscal year. You could have a special
And approving it at the CIP doesn't mean you're approving the bond language. So if we decide, if we put it in for 8.2 million, and then we make the decision we don't want to spend 8.2, the approval process comes first in the bond language by asking by the Board of Finance.
Yes. What you're doing here tonight is you're recommending the CIP to the Board of Finance and the method of financing. And I'll note the last sentence of 803B says, "Only those projects which appear in the previous year's CIP for the ensuing year may be considered for approval." So you have to put it in if you want to do something on it in the 2017, 2016 fiscal